August 27, 2024 council meeting to order. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. So if you will, please stand with me for the prayer and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we bow in your presence this afternoon to invite your Holy Spirit into this meeting. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for our fellow aldermen and women, our city manager, our city attorney, our city staff, for without them, the city could not run as efficiently as it does. Continue to allow us to walk worthy of our positions as servants for this community. For we are a diverse community, and we serve everyone. I ask that you be the rudder on this ship tonight, that guides the direction and the flow of the topics of their conversation. We are a city of civility, and we want to represent this to all who are watching via various platforms. I'm thankful that we have the prophet Isaiah to remind us that although we may disagree, we can come to agree for the greater good of the community. Lord, as each resident prepares to present their three minutes of engagement with the mayor and council, as they state their ideas and their thoughts, we want them to know that we are here for them, we hear them, and we see them. This council loves our city, and we want nothing but good to come upon this city. Love is what makes us who we are. So this is your servant's prayer tonight, as I pray peace upon the land from the local, the state, to the federal. It is your servant's prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight, we will move right into our public comments. We do have three persons who have signed in to speak. So as you come to the mic, what I would ask you to do is come up to the mic and state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Is the clock, will the clock be running behind us? Okay. The clock will be running behind us. I try to give you a heads up when we're at your three minutes or close to it. However, sometimes that's not always the case, but we'll give you a strong enough heads up to be able to kind of bring your presentation to a standstill. So at this time, we have Mr. Mike Thomas. Mr. Thomas, if you will, come to the podium and present to us. And I want to say to you all tonight that we're here to listen to your engagement. So mayor and council will not engage in your three-minute presentation, but we're here to listen to it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me here to speak tonight. My presentation basically is on the concerns we have about in North Jefferson, Dunlap Drive area. I understand there's a housing development that's being proposed on Dunlap Drive, and which I understand housing is very important, and there's a great need for that in the community. But I really do think that right now, that area, that particular area, needs to probably be reconsidered because of the traffic that's currently there in the area. We've got a lot of development to happen recently. I know I reside over on the corner of Dunlap Drive and Jefferson, which is Emmanuel Harris Road, and we recently had a senior apartment built there, which is really nice, a nice complex, but the traffic, the amount of traffic and the commerce going back and forth to service the apartment is really great. There's nothing like I've ever seen. I mean, I grew up in the area from when I was six years old up until now, and so it's like just a new world out there. And what I'm seeing is a lot of growth and development in some parts of town, which is great for Millisville because we've been missing that for a long time. However, I think that needs to be done in an orderly way, and I think I know in the Dunlap Drive area, there's a lot of traffic. On Jefferson, North Jefferson Street, there's a lot of traffic. We get a lot of cars barreling down Jefferson 55 plus, which I know the limit is just above a limit, and now it's difficult to come out of the driveway now to Emmanuel Harris. There's just a lot of, the volume of the traffic in that area has really increased. So I think it would be good if it was another location, you could put something that's needed, like housing. I know that it is definitely needed, but another location would be considered than that Dunlap Drive corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So the next speaker is Mr. Matt Rosing. Mr. Matt, if you will, come to the podium, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Matt Rosing, 248 Swin Avenue. I'm here tonight as the chair of the advocacy committee of the Millisville Baldwin Chamber, and I'm here to speak about the three ordinances that propose to raise fees and costs within the city. It's my understanding that one of those ordinances, the ones relating to permitting fees, is being withdrawn and reworked, so I'm going to confine my comments to the other two. As far as the alcohol permit increases, I want to make sure you understand that there is very specific restrictions on what the city can do by state law. Fees are not taxes, they cannot be arbitrary, and the money obtained from them cannot go to general operations. The Georgia Code says the amount of a regulatory fee shall approximate the reasonable cost of the actual regulatory activity performed by the local government, and the proceeds of such regulatory fee shall be used to fund such regulatory activity and not the general operations of the local government. That's right out of the Georgia Code. So these increases for alcohol permits, just as an example, are pretty significant. In some ways, you're going from $200 for a beer permit to $800. That has to have been justified by some study that showed that your actual costs of administering this permit program has gone up, and you have to be intending to use that money for the alcohol permitting program. If you haven't done that study and you don't have that documentation, you can't pass this law, and any money you obtain from this law cannot be used to support other efforts of the city. It has to somehow be used to support proprietors of alcohol. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that, and if that work hasn't been done, we would ask that the work be done before you vote on this. When it comes to water and sewer, I think we all agree that there are needs that need to be addressed, there are costs associated with that needs. Our concern about that is the way that the fee structure has shifted. It used to be that you would be charged a certain amount per water, no matter what your pipe diameter was. So the meter can be connected to pipes of different sizes. For residential, typically, your options are three-quarter inch or one inch. For commercial or industrial, they can be bigger. And up till now, everyone has paid the same water rate. The shift is now saying that people who have a one-inch pipe, or a two-inch pipe, or a four-inch pipe are going to pay a much higher base rate, even if they're not using any water. So if you have a 12-inch pipe, for example, you're paying $600 a month before you even start using any water. My main concern about that is not just about equity, but also that people have ordered these pipes, they're already in the ground and connected, before they knew you were moving to this system. And that seems to me unfair surprise if I bought and paid for a one-inch pipe, thinking I would be charged the same as everyone else, and now under your new rules, I'm charged a much higher base rate. Please consider this, and the chamber is happy to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosing. I want to pronounce your name correct. Rosing. Rosing. And the final person that has signed in for tonight is Mr. Benjamin Cook.
Madam Mayor, distinguished members of council, Mr. Hank Griffith, city manager, Mr. James Jordan, legal counsel. My name is Benjamin Cook. My business partner, Michael and Macy Taylor, and I have operated the Real Grill, 114 South Wind Street, for the last five and a half years. Our skills, knowledge, and experience represent a cumulative total of 96 years in the industry. We're not new to the restaurant business. I'm appearing before you tonight with a simple request, and that is to please reconsider any proposal that would result in higher taxes or fees on our business. We represent an industry where the gold standard is predicated on a profit margin of a mere 3% to 5%. The inflationary trend of the last three years has been absolutely catastrophic to our industry and to our business. The cost of goods sold for food, liquor, beer, and wine has soared. Operational supply costs have doubled. Labor costs have increased by over 10%. Fixed costs are no longer fixed. Cost of energy, electricity, and gas is more expensive. Insurance is higher. Cost of maintenance is higher. Payroll taxes have increased. As a seasoned operations manager, I have survived the great flood in Macon in 1994. My business survived the terrorist attack of September 11, 2001, and the havoc that followed. We weathered the storm of the financial collapse in 2008, and here we stand, four years removed from the onset of COVID. Having endured all of these events, I am here tonight truthfully more concerned, more uncertain than I have ever been in my career. These are incredibly difficult times for our industry and for our business. We're getting crushed, and we're asking you for your help, our elected leaders. In summary, again, I ask that you please reconsider these proposals that would further the difficulties that we're facing. I thank you, and I'm gratefully appreciative of your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cook, for your comments. As I stated earlier, the mayor and council do want you all to know, we hear you, and we do see you, and we're concerned about your concerns. Thank you all for coming out, and this is the type of engagement we want from the community. Come out and tell us what it is that you all want us to be doing for you as your elected representatives. So we're going to move along with our agenda tonight, and the next on the agenda will be the adoption of the minutes. So at this time, we need to amend the agenda to remove one of the items. We need to remove ordinance O-2408-15 to allow for additional information to be provided prior to receiving a second reading and to be voted on at a later date. Will you please make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make offer the motion to amend the agenda to remove ordinance O-2408-15 from the agenda.
Second.
All right, it has been properly motion and second. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll at this time.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
The motion carries, and the agenda is amended. You all have read a copy of the August 13, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that is needed to be made at this time? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. I will ask the madam clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
The motion carries, and the minutes are adopted. Under the mayor's comments tonight, I want to just bring to the platform by way of the mayor's that one thing for sure, we know we've had our struggles with our water issues in the city of Millisville. However, we as a council, we're being very consistent, we're being very forthcoming in what we are trying to do to make sure that we get the water up and running properly. I think in the last couple of weeks, we kind of went back to a situation that might have happened a couple of years ago, but yet and still, when it comes to the water department, we have a crisis line that you can call. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Madam Clerk, what's that number that they can call for the water crisis line at the police department?
It's the non-emergency number at the police department, 414-4000.
414? 414-478, 414-4000. You can call that number at any given time, and I can assure you that Mr. Griffith is diligent about making sure. If we know something is going on in that water, we're going to make sure we contact you, be it by a door hanger, or someone is going to come out there and personally let you know something is going on in your district. We will provide water. We have provided water. We have had stations that we set up during times when the water would just collapse in the whole city. There are times we've just set up right out here in front of the annex and passed out water. So if you're in need of anything, please don't hesitate to call us. Every person up here represents a district, one through six. Their names in the paper, their emails are in the paper. They don't mind you calling them, okay? One thing for sure, all of us, with the exception of maybe four of us, works a full-time job. The rest of us, we work. It might not be a full-time job, but we work. But we do stop to return phone calls. I always ask people to at least give me 24 hours. If it's an emergency and it comes across my phone, I'm going to respond to it right then and there, no questions asked. But I want you all to know that, council, we really do appreciate you all being here in the city of Millisville. We appreciate your business and everything that you do, and whatever we can do to facilitate, to make sure that everything is running smoothly, we're going to do it. The other thing that I wanted to mention tonight is, I notice, I'm watching the news more, I'm going to be honest, I kind of stopped watching the local news and started reading more of what's going on online, is that it seems as if people think crime is so terrible here in Millisville. We do have our incidents. However, the Millisville Police Department is always right on it. I can guarantee you that. Just looking at my police reports that come across my phone, they are within minutes of being on the scene, probably within an hour or so, most things are already settled in Millisville. Our rate isn't any higher than it has been, as a matter of fact, over the last year, so it declined. We don't pick bodies up off the street in Millisville every day. If you're listening to the news, some people are picking bodies up every five, 10 minutes off the street. That doesn't happen here. Number one, because we're a loving community, and we try to make sure that we are our brother's keepers. And then number two, if something is going on, I've always said in my seven years, if you see something, say something. Be your brother's keeper. Take care of your neighbor. And so on tonight, I want you all to know that just reach out to the city of Millisville, reach out to either one of these representatives or myself. We have, Mr. Griffith is our city manager, you can contact him. You have Ms. Celeste High Tower, she's the secretary. Contact her or our chief of staff, Ms. Melba Hiltson, Buz, Buz Hiltson?
It's Ms. Hiltson.
Contact her, and I promise you, it will get to the right person for your questions and your concerns to be answered, okay? So I just want you all to know that, under my mayor's comments tonight, that we love our community, we love our city, we love our jobs, what we do. I don't think we would be here as long as the majority of everybody up here has. I mean, my second term, if we didn't care, we wouldn't be here trying to be progressive and move forward, because that's where I am as a mayor. I want us to move forward, and I want this city to grow and to become the best city possible. We have so much to offer here, and once we can move the pendulum ahead and get everything going, we'll see just that much more come to this community than what's already here. So that's my soapbox for tonight. Thank you all for bearing with me. I just wanted to make sure I got that out to you all, to let you all know, we do love you and we do care. So please keep that in mind and contact us. Please contact us if you've got some problems, because we can't solve them if you hadn't contacted us and told us what's going on. We'll contact Mr. Griffith or Ms. Melba. We won't know. All right, so we're going to move right along. As we have gone through the last two budget processes, we have discussed the potential for making changes in some of the city's employees' benefits, namely how health insurance is made available to our employees, and also the vehicle by which some type of retirement is offered. Tonight, we will hear from two representatives from the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System, who will give us information on changes in the system's health insurance fund and its offerings, as well as information on the services through the system's defined contribution program and defined benefit program. This information will be discussed at future meetings regarding its effect on our current employee benefits. First will be Mr. Dagmar?
Ms. Dagmar?
Ms. Dag?
Wartson.
Wartson. It would be helpful if you tell me these names prior to the meeting. Wartson. Come on, Ms. Dagmar. I don't like to mispronounce people's names. That's a pet peeve of me, because I have one of those long names. I don't like to mispronounce.
Perfect. So good, good evening. My name is Dagmar Wartson. I am the GMA Life and Health Members Support Field Representative. Basically, what that means is, right now, you are in our renewal period, which is where you receive your pricing for plan year 2025. That is one of the main things that I work with. So today, I'm here to go over your health insurance, which is what you're going to be renewing. So every year in August, you get to make any plan changes, you would like adding, dropping plans, and then in October, you will have, October and November, you will have open enrollment for the city, and then January 1st, those changes, if any employees decided to change plans, will go into effect the same as the pricing. So first, I just want to go over what GMEB's life and health program is. So if you're out in the, I like to call it the wheel world, out with the regular insurance carriers, you can either be fully insured or you can be self-insured. What that means is if you're fully insured, which is what you are doing right now, is that you have a set premium every month for an employee, employee dependents. However, the tiers are set up. It's the same every month. Once a year, you'll renew and see if there's going to be any changes to your pricing. It's very predictable, it's very set in price, and very easy to budget with. Another side is self-funded programs. Self-funded is when you're responsible for all claims coming in, so the city would have to pay for every claim coming in, the city would have to pay. So the cost for every month would change depending on how many claims are coming in. The way GMEB's work is, we are self-funded. We have a pool of about 180 cities right now that we have with Anthem, and then we get to pull together to provide better rates for the cities of Georgia. GMA is built for the cities. We only provide insurance for the cities. We're nonprofit. We're trying to provide the best insurance that we can for your employees. That's our main goal. The plans that are offered through GMA, you cannot get at Anthem. They're personalized and created by us in order to try to provide the best benefits for your employees. Next thing I want to show you, this is just your renewal. This is what is delivered every year. You received an increase this year, and it's all based on your claims. So this is just showing your alternate rates. The claims this year for the city was running a bit high. As discussed with city manager and HR director for mid-year review earlier this year, this was kind of what we predicted. The city is just running what we call HOT, which is your premiums, your claims are way exceeding your premiums right now. For reference, we pulled some reports right now. 60% of your claims are high claimants, which is claims over $50,000. It is looking like they're slowing down, which is great, because that means your claims are going to be lowered, and pricing will follow so. Another thing to look at is your lifestyle. So we also have a report that looks at your lifestyle going on and employees involved in a health insurance program. And currently, 32% of your claims are from lifestyle-related claims. This is something that the city can do something about, and I know there's plans. I have passed the lifestyle report to city manager and HR director, and they're working with our wellness program offered through GMA to see what we can do to hopefully bring down the lifestyle, because that's the way, that's the place you get to hopefully get your claims down. Because insurance is designed for those horrible moments that we sometimes go through through life, especially as a city employee, statistically, they're prone to more injuries, especially if you're in the police. It's just statistically, it's going to happen. And those claims, we're there to protect and everything and help, but the lifestyle is something we can work at and see if we can get some lower prices on it. So they have all that available to them. The next thing we're also looking at, I know it's very small, but this is just looking at what would happen if the city changed plans, because we do offer 24 different plans. A city can offer up to three different plans. We're recommending at least offering two, and I know the city is considering doing so. The perk of offering two different plans, or three, is that employees get more choices of what plan they want. They may want the richer and have to pay a little bit more compared to offering one with a higher deductible that's going to be cheaper for having dependents on it. It's just to provide more choices for your employees. Another thing, if you choose to do so, I'm also coming back out in October to speak with all the employees so they can make an educated decision if they want to make a change to be in the plan that fits them the most. And then I did some calculations. So just right now, you are in a PPO 80/60/1500. What that means is you are in a PPO network with Anthem. 80/60 is your co-insurance, 1500 is your deductible. So once you hit your deductible, it goes into co-insurance. 80/60 means we cover 80% in-network, you pay 20%. 60 means we pay 60, the employee pays 40 for out-of-network. And then you hit your out-of-pocket maximum, and you don't pay anything more. And the copays across all these plans I've shown here are the same. Once we get past 1,000, most copays are the same. The next thing to look at is just by changing network to a POS could save the city 5% off your increase just by changing network. The plan designs could be the exact same. We have looked at network, there's not going to be a big impact on your employees. Another thing we looked at is just keeping the same network but upping the deductible is only going to save you 2%. So it's not a big jump compared to having the same deductible and just changing networks. And lastly, I looked at if we just increase the deductible by $500 and then change it to the POS network, that can save you 8% off your renewal. These are all shared with HR and finance, so everyone can take a look. I just wanted to show you that we have many different options. They also received all the different pricing for the different plans, so they can make the best decision. They have also a whole plan design summary that shows all our different plans, so they can see what's best for the employee population at the city. I know that's a lot. It's a lot of information, and it gets very boring very fast, but we just wanted to show you what GMA Life and Health can do, and especially being involved in the health insurance, and especially coming back in October and just educating the employees on what great benefits they're actually getting through the city. Any questions?
Can we get a copy of your presentation?
Listen, you'll be wanting your box.
Perfect. Then we'll call upon Randy.
Next, we're going to ask Mr. Randy Briskin. Did I pronounce that right? Got that right? Okay. He's also a field service representative from Georgia Municipal Association and Employees' Benefits Services. So it's in your hands, sir.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm here basically to, I've been asked, Mr. Griffith, to talk about some of the capabilities that GMA has when it comes to our retirement services that we do. We have basically two major types, one being defined benefit, which you folks are already familiar with, that we handle approximately 300 separate plans. And then the other is the defined contribution, which is 401-457. So I'll kind of speak to those. So throwing acronyms out there, I know Dagmar talked about GMEBs. I'm going to talk about RMEBs, which is the Risk Management Employee Benefit Service. So basically who we are, we're just a part of GMA. There are, I don't know, maybe about 25 of us at this point that are working for several aspects of RMEBs, because RMEBs is risk management and employee benefits. So everything from, well, everything from the insurance side, RISI side, et cetera. When it comes to what we do, we have certain criteria that we try to follow. I'm not going to read everything through there, but you can see that our programs have retirement, life and health, property, liability, management, and workforce comp as well. So obviously, I'm going to be focusing, I've been asked to speak to the retirement part. As I said before, we have two main plans. One is being the GMEBs defined benefit, also known as pension. We've been doing that really since, you can see, '60s or thereabouts. We have, at this point, about 300 plans. Not a single one of them is exactly the same, so it's a bit of an administrative nightmare, but we do a pretty good job. We have a dedicated team, and that is a turnkey system that we provide. Right now, depending on how the stock markets did today, we are overseeing approximately $3.3 billion. That allows GMA to actually have access to some of the best money managers in the entire country. So we have, and we meet on a regular basis, quarterly, with those folks, actually, I'm sorry, two times a year. And I would also tell you that they're from all over the place. When it comes to the returns on those When it comes to the returns on those investments, we are in the top 5%, if not higher, for the past 35 to 40 years, in terms of the returns we've been getting on the investments. So when we do have that type of, when we do have that type of success in terms of the investments, that just means that our participants don't have to fund as much on a year-to-year basis. So that's just a brief thing on the DB side. I was asked mostly to concentrate on the defined contribution side here. You know, this is the program where we have a 401 and 457 program, just for clarity. If a city is going to be contributing either automatically or in the, in a match to what the participant is doing, typically, the city is gonna be contributing into a 401A plan. We try to keep things separate in these plans. So 401A is the employer portion of that. The 457 is what the employee does. The 457 is basically like the 401K of the public sector. The reason we have them separate, for one thing, unlike the 401K, we try to keep things separate, we can follow. The other thing is that if the city contributes to a 401A, they don't have to pay FICA taxes on those contributions. The other thing is that the city can establish a vesting period, similar to what you may have in a pension plan, you can have a vesting period, which means that you can set a certain, a minimum amount of time for the employee to get 100% ownership of the contribution from the city. And so that can be several different ways. Typically, it's only a maximum of five years, but that can be either graduated vesting, meaning 20% per year, or you can do something like what we call cliff vesting, where they have to be there the full five years before they would get their, the city's portion of that contribution. So going forward, he says. It's not going.
I was trying to get it on their, on their monitor, and I may have just totally screwed up the works, so.
Ah.
See if I fixed it then, or not. I just can't see it on my screen, there we go.
Okay, so that's where we were, and it's not advancing necessarily, let's see. Can you advance the slide, then, if I, all right. All right, well, that's.
There we go.
Okay. So again, in the defined contribution, what we have is a number of things that we bring to the table with that. First of all, we have what we consider fairly competitive fees. The other thing that we've got are, there we go, all right. So we've got, when we brought this program in back in 2016, we basically deferred to the folks that helped us invest the large amount of money on the DB side, and said, here's a clean piece of paper, we're not obligated to any fund family or anything else, we are not a broker-dealer, give us what you would consider to be the best investment choices. So they come up with a certain number. The 23 basically consists of target date funds, which you may be familiar with, very popular these days. That is an age-based investment whereby the overseeing manager, and for us, we're using T-Roe Price, which is considered to be one of the better fund managers out there, they will invest for the participant based on what they think is best for their age. So if they're younger, the vast majority of the underlying investments are gonna be exposed to the stock market for the growth opportunity, as the person has a career here at the city, very slowly, T-Roe Price would slowly change that mixture and make it more conservative the closer you get to, closer you get to retirement, or when you're gonna leave. That program is so successful that over 80% of the, approximately 165 million in the program are invested in one of those target date funds. So the other thing we do is, we have leveraged our exposure with the money from the DB side to get much better pricing on the institutional shares for the T-Roe Price and the other mutual funds that we have. So I'm not gonna get, dig in too much, but we have, if you wanna invest just in the S&amp;P 500 index, it's all of four one-hundredths of a percent, four basis points. We have a dedicated staff that works on this, you know, it's myself and another person who are primarily in the field. I bring a couple of decades of experience working specifically just with government employees. And then we also have record-keeping by our company, I'm sorry, an outside source, TPA. Originally, they were called Newport, they have just been recently gobbled up corporately by ASCENSUS, ASCENSUS, A-S-C-E-N-S-U-S. They are now one of the biggest record-keepers in the entire country when it comes to this field. So that's kind of who we're dealing with. Again, as I was going into 401A plan, that provides for the city or the employer to handle the, the automatic, and I should say, matching contributions depending on how the city decides they wanna do it, you know, stepping away. GMA is the administrator of these plans, it's the city who decides how that's gonna be. Are you gonna do something that's automatic, that the employee doesn't have to do anything with? Is it going to be a match only, that the employee has to save for themselves to get the funds from the city? Or is it a hybrid? It might be a certain percent that's automatically done with, you know, a match, if possible. As I mentioned before, you're avoiding the FICA taxes. The individuals participating, it's their own accounts, they are the ones who make ultimately the decision when it comes to the investing. They're also the ones that shoulder the majority, if not all, of the administrative expenses. So the only thing the city would be budgeting for would be the amount that they've decided to put out there, either on an automatic basis or as a match, just, just. And then again, the 457, that's where the employee decides what they wanna do, how much they wanna do, they have complete flexibility in how much they wanna contribute every payroll, they can change that at any time, it's not like open enrollment and the other benefits, they can increase, decrease, stop or start at any point. We now have the ability to accommodate if they wanna do it on a pre-tax basis, which was the traditional way of doing things. You know, I've earned this dollar today, but I'm gonna put it into this 457 account, so the IRS won't tax me this year, and when I finally retire, then I can, I'll be taxed at that point. Or the Roth, which is an after-tax, and if they play by the rules, which are pretty simple, they can take that money out, plus all the earnings, tax-free. It's not an either-or decision, they can, they can put a little in both if they want. We have, once you do leave the city, all sorts of flexibility, they can move it to a new employer, they can keep it in the funds, they can take it and move it to their own financial consultant if they want, it's, they can take it all at once, you know, there's plenty of flexibility with that. And again, they are responsible for all the administrative costs, as I mentioned. They're gonna get quarterly statements with us, they also can go online and look at their account, it is updated every day. Bless their hearts if they have to look at it every day, but it is updated every day. We don't really encourage that, but that is the case, so. And not only that, but it's a very robust platform that is the site, and it's not our site, it's ASCENSUS' site. So not only do they have, they can look at their account six ways to Sunday in terms of analyzing the performance, they can look at all the other different funds, there are projections on there, so they can say, well, you know, I've got this with a DB plan, I think I might be getting this from social security, they can put in how much they're getting and get a projection. And there's also a separate unit that's just financial education as well, so it, we bring a lot to the table in that regard. I have listed the plan investment options here, it's very small, tough to read. The bottom portion is all of the target date funds. Basically, in almost any major asset category, you can either do an index, so if you want large companies, you could do an S&amp;P 500 index, or you can do a proactively managed investment option as well, within every one of those asset categories. We also have, if people get real nervous, we have what I call the no-surprise fund. That is a fund that basically, it always trades at a dollar a share, and it is basically, you know, saving your principal, throws off a little bit of an, a little tiny bit of interest, not that much. But again, some people, you know, wanna run for the hills when, when the market goes down. Although my advice would be not to do that, but that's, that's a whole nother thing. So these are, these are the things that we've got. We think it's worked very well for us in terms of giving most people what they want. This does not have a lot of options, if you've got somebody who's very sophisticated and wants to do, you know, third-world technology fund or something like that, we don't have that, you know. And you, as an employer, have some fiduciary responsibility to kind of keep them within the parameters, cuz this is retirement account, it is not an investment account. So I can't tell you how many times I've been asked why I can't do crypto-investing in my 457. I said, well, that's, that's a little bit too much of a risk in that. So that's pretty much the, the overview. Wow, look at that, same picture as Dagmar had. We must, I didn't see you taking that picture when I took, anyway. So that's what we've got. We are more than willing to work with the city in any way or any capacity that you may have, or any sort of plan that you wanna create. Again, we are the administrators, you know, we will, we will give you some guidance if you need to, or some parameters, or examples of what others, either surrounding or just in general, are doing, cuz we are a little bit higher up elevation-wise in terms of looking at the panorama from all of this. So with that, I will ask if there are any questions at all in general about the DC plan, or even the DB plan.
One question.
Yes.
That's the FICA.
Uh huh.
Pays the FICA, cuz I know the government better than.
There's no, but there, no one pays the FICA on that amount, no. That's a, that's a contribution from the employer.
The city makes.
Right. To the employees 401, and you don't have to match the FICA on that.
Surprise, 65 or anything like that?
Nope. Not at all. That's the beauty of, and that's why we see the best practices is to have the two. It's different in the private sector where you've got the employer and the employee both putting into the 401K, that's not the case here. Yeah.
Another quick question.
Sure.
There's one thing we've been playing around with, and looking at this, and how many cities actually make a contribution and then match?
I would tell you, obviously, it depends on if they have a pension plan or not. That's the, because a lot of the cities that have a pension plan and are paying maybe 100% or almost 100%, they'll have a 457, and the employees go, why aren't, why isn't there a match? Well, we're paying probably anywhere from 10% to 15% of your salary in this. So sometimes they don't have that. There are cities who will only, who, I'd have the pension plan and will only do a match, saying, hey, we've got this money for you, but you've gotta shoulder some of the responsibilities. And so it's, there's no automatic, and then there's that other, you know, if they don't have any sort of DB side, there might be a combination of automatic and match as well. What we see is that anytime there's a match, obviously, participation rate is much higher. The other thing that you can do, and this is much more dominant now in the private sector, is you can actually require that the new hires, or whoever's gonna be in this plan, are automatically enrolled in it. And that they would have to opt out to not participate. When that happens, you see participation rates of about 90%. Just standalone 457 plans, we probably see participation rates of less than 50%, unfortunately. So sometimes you just have to, you know, just, just pull them to the water, so to speak. And, you know, someone new, and they just see their check, and they go, oh, well, you know, this is it. And that's because typically, maybe they start with 3% as a, as a, you know, mandatory contribution into the 457. So it's however you guys wanna do it, however you wanna incentivize your employees. Thank you for those questions. Anything else?
I want to thank you.
All right, I appreciate it.
You should be, for coming to share with us this evening, and we know you both have to get back to Atlanta, we wanna wish you safe travels.
Thank you so much.
Heading back up the highway, and thank you again for coming. I look forward to seeing you all in October.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to the city manager's report, and I will recognize Mr. Griffin for his report at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna say before Dagmar and Randy get out, that I appreciate them coming down today. We tried to set something up with Randy earlier, and we had some failings in terms of being able to get the information out to, to, to make that meeting happen. I've just started working with Randy, even though I've known him through GMA since I've been in this role, and I appreciate what he is, is helping us do as a city. I actually started, just started working with Dagmar as well, but she's kind of a new part of GMA who's coming out and talking to us about our insurance now. And Sandra and I have been really excited about that. She's already been to see us one other time, and she spent the afternoon with us today, and she's gonna be back with us in October to do some education on the employee side of the house. So I really wanna thank GMA as a whole for making folks like this available to us. What we will do with, we, meaning Sandra and myself, we will take the insurance information as well as the defined benefit, defined contribution information, and bring it back to y'all, digest it a little bit for you, share some information with it. In terms of insurance, we'll actually be bringing to you a couple of recommendations based on prices at our September 10th council meeting, because we have to let them know by September 13th what we want to do. But you all will have that information long before the September 10th meeting, and then we can discuss it at that, at that public meeting, and, and make sure that we are meeting what you want to meet in terms of employees. So thank y'all both for coming, safe travels, and we'll see y'all soon. Thank you. We, we do have two ordinances on the agenda tonight. These ordinances, or, or the fees associated with these ordinances, were discussed in some regards in multiple budget cycles. 2408-13 is the ordinance dealing with alcohol license fees. I will remind you that these were not randomly set, they were set by comparing Milledgeville to similar college towns, as well as some other peer cities around the state, and also looking at the portion of funds necessary to run the city that are directly, that directly related to either the issuance of those alcohol license, or the enforcement that is associated with the provision of those alcohol license. So those were the two things that we discussed during the, the most recent budget process associated with those. Ordinance O2408-14, obviously, this is the ordinance dealing with fees for all water and sewer user fees. The water and sewer fees are the ones that, that we have been discussing for about two years now, both in, within and outside of the budget process, and they are absolutely the ones necessary for the water and sewer bond issuance, and will be phased in over a three-year period. These fees were set forth by our engineering firm, Turnip Seed Engineering. Kenny Green from Turnip Seed even came and did a presentation on you all, how these fees were arrived at, and they will specifically be used for water and sewer infrastructure improvements, even more specifically with renovations of the water treatment plant and the capital improvement plans for water delivery. and the capital improvement plans for water delivery infrastructure. A number of governments set their rates based on meter size. And the, the, actually, the fee system that we have now with residents paying the same fees for water and sewer that commercial and industrial accounts pay is extremely antiquated. Not every government or authority that provides utilities necessarily do it on meter fee like this, these fees do. But they probably, if they're not doing it on meter fees, have an increased amount per gallon or per 1,000 gallons of water use based on the amount of use that those folks are using. And it's kind of reverse economics. The more you use, the higher your per thousand gallons or per 2,000 gallons or per 10 gallons or whatever it is equals based on the fact that it costs more money to produce that additional water that something other than a residential account is using. In terms of fairness, these fees are being phased in over three phase-in period, as you know. We actually had talked about them starting on October 1st of this year. During the course of conversation and talking about these fees during our last budget process, we decided to wait and have them start January 1 of 2025. Phase 2 will go into effect July 1 of 2025 and then Phase 3 will go into effect January 1 of 2026. This is the first time that water and sewer fees have been raised since 2010. So we're playing a little bit of catch-up, but it, it is based solely on what's necessary for anywhere from a $35 to $40 million bond issuance that will be necessary to do these infrastructure improvements that are being planned over the next couple of three years. So the last thing that I have in my report is on Friday, Tim Thomas, our Public Works Director and myself met with Simonton Engineering and got an initial report on the roundabout being considered for Jefferson and Dunlap Streets. And basically, the traffic count on those have been done. The speed measurements on those have been done. The warrants for those, for that one have been done, both from a signal standpoint and a, and a roundabout standpoint. And the folks at Simonton now are working into bringing us some hard numbers about what that roundabout will actually cost. I'm not going to talk about what they said, but I was a little bit surprised at the price, to be quite honest with you, in terms of the level of it, not, not because it was high, but because it was reasonable. And then we also got a, a very quick review of what's been done so far on the roundabout at Jefferson and Log Cabin that we're working with the county on. And we recommended to Mr. Simonton that they go back out and do that traffic count again now that school is in session at John Milledge, because we anticipated that that would increase that traffic count because it was done in, in July. And he's going to do that. He will be coming to, to give a presentation on both of those roundabouts at our September 24th council meeting. We certainly will invite the county to that. I don't think he will be as far along on the, on the roundabout at Log Cabin in Jefferson, because he got started on that one later than he did the one at Jefferson and Dunlap. But we will invite the county to, to that presentation. And we certainly will be working with the county manager and any commissioners that, that wish to come in meetings with, with Mr. Simonton prior to that time. So I'm excited about what's happening at those two intersections. And we look forward to having Paul and his staff come do the presentation. It's, I'm, I'm kind of like a kid in a candy store. He told me he was going to have an animation to show how the traffic's going to move through them. And I'm excited about seeing that with different colored cars and all those kinds of things. We will not have a presentation at the September 10th council meeting so that Ms. Witherspoon and I can talk to you and make recommendations to you about insurance offerings and the rates associated with those. And we will work with Mr. Chambers and the Pension Committee to further discuss the defined benefit and defined contribution plans. Interestingly enough, Mr. Chambers, just as an aside, something Sandra and I learned today, if we transfer our defined benefit plan to GMA, that automatically provides insurance to retirees between 62 and 65. So there may be a number of things that the Pension Committee's been wanting to do for some time coming together in this whole process. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, for your report. Now we'll move on into old business. As mentioned by the city manager in his report, we have two ordinances on the agenda this evening, which will set various fees to take effect in the coming months. These ordinances will introduce and receive their first reading during the August 13th, 2024 council meeting. They are receiving their second reading and coming before you this evening for a vote. I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2408-13 by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance setting license fees and conditions for specific businesses.
You have heard the ordinance, is there a motion to adopt? Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor, I would like to propose a few, I'd like to propose a few amendments to the ordinance provided. I would make a motions to strike the last sentence of the fourth paragraph, which reads, there is an additional annual $200 non-refundable application fee for all alcohol licenses.
Mr. Jordan, I'll refer to you to.
Is that the, is that a amendment to that?
Yes, sir, I'm offering a, a motion.
Just that one, just that one.
There, there will be additional. There, there will be additional, we'll do them one at a time.
All right, that sounds good. Then that will require obviously a second and does everybody understand what Mr. Reynolds is seeking to delete?
He said there was going to be additional.
Additional.
There, there, he's going to propose a series of amendments.
Are there any other ones, Mr.?
These will all be for the same ordinance, yes.
Go ahead.
Additional amendment I would like to offer to strike line, let's see. This will be section A under item 8. All consumption on the premise licensees who engage in Sunday sales are permitted here under this subsection shall pay in addition to the above fees an annual fee of $600. I would like to motion to have that struck.
Um, Madam Mayor, before you go on, because I don't appreciate having these thrown at us at the last minute. You know, if we're going to discuss it, then we need to discuss it and not, not thrown at us at the last minute. It needs to be provided, give us enough time to, to see if we agree with that or not, discuss it, and then do it. But I, Walter, I don't like stuff thrown at me at the last minute. I don't appreciate it.
I would be happy to offer a motion to table this.
You should have provided it for us so that we could see it prior to the meeting.
I would be more than happy to offer a motion to table this for further discussion at a later date.
I'll accept that motion.
All right, so the motion.
The first motion.
I also withdraw the first two motions.
So it stated he's withdrawing his first two motions on the fees for the striking of, what's that? Eight, eight of the $600 increase. And what was the other one?
The first motion was the $200 non-refundable application fee.
And the $200 non-refundable fee. I need to get a motion on us to table this until the next meeting.
There's been a motion and a second.
Okay, so Ms. Walden, Ms. Shinholster motioned, Ms. Walden, the second. Madam Clerk, will you call it off? Did you, she motioned in the second?
Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds made a motion.
Ms. Walden. Ms. Walden, second, and then, okay.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
I'm, I'm just going over, give me a moment. Yeah, I just want to make sure. Aye.
So right now, we're just tabling it.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Table that to a further date.
Here, let me make sure I understand, the entire ordinance is tabled, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I would just keep, ask you all to bear in mind that that takes another two weeks away from us being able to renew alcohol license.
To renew, what was that, Mr.?
That takes another two weeks away from time that businesses have to renew their alcohol license.
Unless we.
Do a call meeting.
Do a call meeting.
Exactly.
And get it done. Which I would suggest we do once we get the changes and have an opportunity to discuss them.
We can then, then, okay.
Right.
Mr. Reynolds, are you going to send those amendments out directly? Or you want to send them to me and I'll send them out?
I will send those to you and if you would like to distribute those.
Perfect, I'll do it.
So at this time, I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2408-14 by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance setting charges for sewer services, water services, water and sewer tapping and connection fees and other related fees and deposits.
You all have heard the ordinance, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, second.
Are there any questions?
I do have one question. In regards to fire suppression systems, I understand that those are typically a larger sized line. Are those metered?
They are not.
They are not metered.
I wish they were, but they are not.
Just wanted to make sure, okay. Because I didn't want someone to have to pick up an eight-inch meter fee or a 10-inch meter fee monthly just to have fire suppression service for their business.
But they, they are not.
Right, you all have heard the ordinance, is there a motion to adopt?
It's been motioned and seconded, Mayor.
I'll throw me off with all these questions over tonight. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Tonight, we have a public hearing to consider amending the land development code to allow a special use of property located at 2345 North Columbia Street. This property is currently owned by MDM Services Incorporated and is zoned CC or community commercial. The applicant desires this allowance for a Circle K convenience store and gas station. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, it has.
I'll ask you to please read ordinance O-2402-05 by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia. Ordinance grants a special use for a Circle K convenience store and gas station located at 2345 North Columbia Street.
The applicant wishes to withdraw the application for a special use and that the withdrawal be approved without prejudice. I will ask Attorney Jordan to explain the results of the withdrawal without, with or without prejudice. Mr. Jordan, if you would, make sure you give the legal definition to this.
Yes, ma'am, and I believe legal counsel for Circle K is here as, as, as well. And he may want to be recognized to speak to this. Under our code, our land use code 2.2.5C, basically, when an applicant requests to withdraw the application after it has gone through planning and zoning and is before the governing body, that request can be granted without prejudice, which means that the applicant at any time after this meeting, the applicant can refile their petition for the special use. Or if counsel does not want to grant withdrawal without prejudice, then the withdrawal would be with prejudice and that would require the applicant to wait another six months before the applicant could come back and seek a special use for this same parcel. I will tell you that this application was originally, I think, filed in February and it was heard by planning and zoning maybe in March. You know, that was a transition period for us in our planning and zoning department. The applicant had, or representative of the applicant had actually asked to withdraw it at that time. We're announcing in an email to our planning and zoning administrator that they did not want to go forward at that time. It remained in limbo in those communications, I think that's the best way to say it. And then was brought to P and Z's attention and was brought to my attention by the applicant's legal counsel, Mr. Olson, that they wanted to be able to have something definitive decided by counsel so they could proceed and know how to proceed going forward. And obviously, because of the time that had gone by, they of course want to have that withdrawal approved by you without prejudice. It's technically been about six months. We had to go through the advertising process, which, you know, obviously takes 45 to 50 days with our notifications and all. So that's why we're here today. I don't know, Mr. Olson is here. I don't know if he wants to address counsel in that regard.
Come on to the podium, Mr. Olson.
Usually when he stands, he won't.
Yes, we did want to address, what we're simply asking for is for this application to be withdrawn without prejudice. I think Mr. Jordan has accurately stated there was a length of time in this. So we're really approaching six months from planning and zoning making the decision they made anyway. And all we're asking for is the ability to, having heard some of the concerns that were raised at planning and zoning, to see if we can address those. And certainly, if counsel allows us to withdraw without prejudice, we can modify our application, see if that addresses the concerns that were raised. And, you know, counsel would still have the ability to obviously reject the application or to grant it. So we're really not asking for, the reality of it is, as Mr. Jordan stated, we're really almost at the six-month point anyway. I don't see that there's any harm to the city, the city in any way in bringing this to allow us to withdraw, you know, without prejudice. And certainly, we would ask to do that so that we can see if we can address the concerns that were raised. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Jordan. With it being almost at the six-month point, does the approval by counsel extend that another six months?
Well, if the counsel, there needs to be a motion made to allow the withdrawal without prejudice. If the counsel, and counsel would vote on that. And if counsel voted that down, then it is a withdrawal with prejudice and there is another six months that would be tacked on to, from today. So.
But without prejudice, it wouldn't be?
No, it can be filed at any point after tonight. New application.
But would they have to do that with, up to the six months? Or do they have up to the six months if they have an extension?
No, no, no. If, if you allow them to withdraw without prejudice. No, no, no. If, if you allow them to withdraw without prejudice, they're free to come in at any point after tonight and file a new application for a special use. If you decide that you're not going to allow them to withdraw it without prejudice, then it is with prejudice, and they would have to wait six months from today before they could file that application for that piece of property.
So, Mr. Jordan, you said they're at the six months. How close are we at the six months?
It got, it got filed in, we looked at it, it got filed in February.
March 4th was when, March 4th was when...
March 4th was the initial hearing. And then, and, and then fairly promptly after that, after reviewing emails and so forth that were received by the P&amp;Z administrator, they were asking for, to withdraw it. But, you know, that was a transitional period for our planning and zoning department, and I think it was considered that they asked for it, and that would be the end of it. But from purely with our planning, with our zoning code, land use code, it requires an action by you once it gets passed, planning and zoning.
Make a motion to...
Let me, let me, let me take it back.
I'm sorry, Ms. Turner. Yes, they have to, they have to file a new application, because go back through planning and zoning, and, and then ultimately, we come back to, to you.
Okay. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application for the special use without prejudice.
So moved.
Are there any questions or additional comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
We do, we do not have any new business alcohol license applications or board appointments to consider for tonight. I have not been advised by legal counsel if there's any need to go into closed session. And this concludes the items on the agenda. Does anyone on counsel have any questions or comments?
Mayor, let me just make one quick announcement. You'll be getting some more information about it from Main Street, but September 1st Friday is Meet the Bobcats Hancock Street. The 100 block of West Hancock Street will be closed, and Georgia College will be taking care of First Friday with their athletes, and have a lot of really cool games to play with the kids, and, and it's going to be, it's going to be a good, a good night. They, they approached the city and Main Street about doing this, and we were happy that we were able to, to work with them on doing that. So I would encourage you to plan to join us for First Friday and Meet the Bobcats.
Wait, in September?
Yes.
Have been no other comments or questions or concerns? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.